Are we recording?
There they are.
Good. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our January 25, 2024 meeting. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Landry County Commission Board meeting. While public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission, please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 241-0153B2. So I'll call the meeting to order. Dee, would you like to send the pledge?
Sure.
My pledge is to the flag, our United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Landry County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be called to remove from the agenda at any time. Commissioners report on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. JR, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I went to a water board meeting, and there wasn't a whole lot going on there. But we're having an update on sixth, or ninth. That's all I got.
Okay. Kathy?
I don't have anything.
Dee?
I attended my first meeting. I went to the Kingston Templores meeting, and they're also getting ready to update their master plan. And they have a few concerns out there. One of the issues they're having is people that are camping on the lots with no septic systems, and they're trying to figure out how to enforce that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commissioner. So we are having a few technical difficulties here, and that is on the agenda. So this, the go-to meeting is a courtesy, but with us not being able to get on... We just unmuted all of us. But, so I'm not sure how everybody online is hearing, or if they are hearing. Right now, it shows you guys is muted. I apologize for that, but it's what we have. They're recording, so that's what's important. It will be later posted on YouTube like normal. So anybody that wants to see this can always pull it up on YouTube. Other than that, I have no report.
Okay. We'll move into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there a public comment? You don't have to push anyone.
For the record, I am Wayne Nebiker, and I am on the Landry County Conservation District. And on February 22nd, we're putting on a producer's workshop. And this is going to be on weed identification, weed management. And it also provides credits, credits for your spray licenses. And it's going to be February 22nd in the public meeting room across the hall here. Lunch will be provided. It starts at 8:00 AM, and will run until 4:00 PM. And I think this is a real good deal. It can, can give the conservation district some new ideas, and it can, can also help identify noxious weeds in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. All right, so we'll move into our, actually, is there any more public comment? Okay, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Landry County Clerk's office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of January 25, 2024 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of December 14, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of January 11, 2024 Meeting Minutes. And four, approval of payroll change requests.
We did not, not, we didn't get any minutes, right?
December 14th meetings, yes. We did receive, but not January 11th.
So I will make the motion to approve one, two, three, and four.
So just, we didn't receive three, so just one, two, and four?
One, two, and four.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve one, two, and four. A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into one for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills.
Okay, we need to withhold check number 222-526.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pay the remaining bills?
I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pay check 222-526.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm standing, it's made to my employer. We'll move to item two. Update from the Argenta Justice of the Peace on having JAVs upgrade the system in the Argenta Justice Court and 11th Judicial District Courtrooms. One of these.
Good morning. And actually, the agenda should have read, it is, I'm sorry, Denise Fortune for the record. It should have read, Justice of the Peace Denise Fortune and 11th Judicial District Court Judge, Mr. Jim Shirley. We had originally asked to be put on the agenda to talk to you guys about our JAV system, our recording system for the courts. We had, I had received a call a few months ago that a lot of our equipment was no longer covered under the warranty because it is eight years old. And I was informed by JAVs that the commissioners had updated their JAV system a couple of years ago. But neither court had been notified or updated. We didn't know about it. So we could have gone one of two ways. We could have just updated our recorders, which it was our recorders that were not being covered anymore, but JAVs was going to continue to, to keep them running for us until we could get to the commissioners to find out. In the me, and so they had done a proposal for just upgrades to the system versus a whole new installation of a system to both courtrooms. Since then, Judge Shirley lost his hard drive in his JAV system. And the Justice Court, when the county was having technical issues a couple of months ago, the courts were worried about not being able to record court, which legally we have to do. So they had sent the proposal, the proposals for just to upgrade the things that absolutely had to be done right now versus the upgrades for us to upgrade the whole system in both courtrooms. And so the original purpose to get on the agenda was to come and tell you guys, hey, we didn't budget for this because we didn't know, we need the money. But since then, I've done more research. So it's kind of like an information thing to you guys today. I can use, the, and I say aye, I apologize. Argenta Justice Court has administrative assessment fees and facility fees. And those can be used after approved by the Justice Courts to upgrade technology, things within the building. I had reached out to the treasurer, Juisty, to see how much I had in the AA fees to cover it. And the AA fees had enough in it to just cover Justice Court. I could have just upgraded my system. But I then reached out to Judge Shirley. We had a couple of meetings, we did some research. And I actually had, I, the Argenta Justice Court had enough money in their facility fees to cover Justice Court, District Court. And through negotiations with JAVs, we've also, we're purchasing an additional year of maintenance. And I looked into that because I'm going out at the end of this year. A new judge is coming in. And I did not want the new judge, whoever it is, to have to remember to budget for maintenance on the JAV system. They take office, they go to mandatory school a couple of weeks later. Couple of weeks later, they need to start working on their budget. And the facility fees, between talking, having conversations with both Lakin as the fiscal officer and the treasurer's office, facility fees have more than enough money to cover everything. It will take care of Judge Shirley's courtroom. It will take care of the Argenta Justice courtroom. And it will pay maintenance fees for an additional year, which is several thousand dollars, so that a new judge doesn't have to worry about that.
I was going to say something else, I can't remember. Any, any input, any?
No, I just, I appreciate the work that Judge Fortune's done. We, I didn't realize it was an eight-year-old system. I guess, I didn't think about it. But it's an eight-year-old system, so at some point, the systems were out.
You just don't know, you don't know it's broke until it's broke.
Yeah.
It was doing.
We need it for jury trials. We've had three jury trials here. We've got some more before the end of the year. I've got to talk to you a little bit about that after we're done with this. But I appreciate the work that she's done.
And I did reach out to the Supreme Court to make sure. I'm pretty clear about the AA fees and the facility fees because I've been with the court since they were started 100 years ago. But I wanted to reach out to the Supreme Court and just make sure that the Justice Courts have the authority to use those and what we can use them for. And because this is a county building which houses the courts, the Justice Courts are the only ones. District Court doesn't, the commissioners, nobody has control over those fees except for the Justice Courts. And so I wanted to make 100% sure that I could cover not only the Justice Court with our fees, but I could help the District Court out also and not have to come to you guys and go, hey, we need $200,000 for all this out of taxpayers' money.
So basically, you need the upgrade before this next budget cycle.
Oh, yeah.
So if, if, if you can't use those funds, then you'll be coming back to test?
No, no, I would have been coming back. I can use the funds.
Oh, you can use the funds, okay.
I can use the funds, yes. So this turned into a plea of the judge and I coming before you guys going, hey, we need 200 grand. And it's not quite 200, it's like 190,600 and something. It's more of an information thing because this is the county's building. You guys are in charge of this building. I just wanted to let you know, instead of us asking for money, while I have, as judge, have control of the fees, I'm going to use it, unless you guys have any objection to it, to cover the costs for both District Court and Justice Courts.
So you have, Denise, help me to interrupt. I just don't want to...
That's okay.
...answer my question. Thank you for doing all that work. Will you have a maintenance contract in place? So when you leave that, that, just like you said, it'll already be in place?
It was signed.
It rolls in.
Yes, I just signed the contracts yesterday. JAVs had submitted the contracts to Lakin as the finance director. But when it comes to the courts, we sign our own contracts with, with JAVs. So they sent those to me, and I signed them all and sent them in. And after having a meeting with Lakin to make sure it's not going to mess up anything for Landry County budget-wise or cause any problems, so I signed all three contracts and sent them back to JAVs. And now JAVs will reach out to me. It takes a while to get on the schedule. It'll probably be April, May, it could even be June, before they can get here. But they have promised to cover the courts to take care of us until we can get the new equipment installed.
Thank you very much, Denise, for all your work.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, I have information to share on our jury trial budget, which is not going to hold. We've got a couple more jury trials this year. They cost $7,000, $8,000 a trial.
How much, I'm sorry?
$7,000, $8,000.
Okay.
And we're not paying for a reporter, so we're doing it off the JAV system. But, so I'm going to have to come back to you and ask to augment that portion of my budget. So once we get the clearer picture of what it's going to look like, we will come back. I, I'm just giving you that information.
All right, thank you.
And then sitting in the first row is Katie North. She's my new juvenile probation chief. Dan was my, my previous chief, and he retired, of course. So I just thought I'd bring her and introduce her and let her feel the heat of your presence.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move into item three. For discussion of possible action to acknowledge pursuant to NRS 241-03951, findings of fact and conclusion of law by the office and the Attorney General, OAG File Number 13897-453, dated January 5, 2024, was determined the Landry County Board of Commissioners violated the Nevada Open Meeting Law at the commission meeting on June 9, 2022 by deliberating and taking action on an item that was not on the agenda. Because NRS 241-0203D1 requires that the agenda include a clear and complete statement of the topics scheduled to be considered at the meeting. A copy of the Attorney General finding of fact and conclusion of law is included in the supporting materials for the site. So from my understanding, we're supposed to have a motion to acknowledge the Attorney General's file and this, this violation, if I'm correct, Counselor?
That would be best. Let me just make a quick comment. The section that the Attorney General references, NRS 241-0395, the second subsection, I think, is applicable here. And it says, I'm reading from the statute book, "The inclusion of an item on the agenda for a meeting of a public body pursuant to subsection one is not an admission of wrongdoing for the purposes of a civil action, criminal prosecution, or injunctive relief." I'll also comment that this statute is odd to me. It's talking about the Attorney General making findings of fact and conclusions of law. Last I checked, the Attorney General wasn't a court. Okay? Normally, those phrases are applied to courts. So, but that's what the legislature mandated, and they have the right to do that. It's, it's one of those things that really can't do anything about, but I don't want anybody to panic that this was all that terrible. It's also old news. We've had situations similar to this arise since then. We don't do that. Point out one that comes to mind. It, that is Burt, if you, if you go back and you look at it, which I did, I watched the video. He asked whether or not the DA or anybody thought that it should be on the agenda later, which was exactly what should have been done. It should have been put on as a separate agenda item. And everybody said, oh, that's probably not necessary under the circumstances. Well, let me just bring your attention to when Ms. Waits was here, her and Mr. Chop and JR decided that we should do a survey of employees and voted to do that. Subsequently, there were some clarifications needed and, you know, whether or not we should go forward with it. When that came up, Burt put it on the agenda so that it could be done away with. And that's what we did back on, or you did, back on November 9. Okay, so that shows that we already learned the lesson from this earlier thing. We're outside, if they were going to do something, they should have done it within one year. You've got a one-year statute of limitations on open meeting law violations. And I don't know if they just considered it so minor that they, they didn't act on it and then realized they didn't act on it, so they did this. I have no idea. But I'm not that concerned about it. I think it's something, it's old news. I think it's something that we'd already taken under consideration. I mildly agree with the Attorney General's office that, yeah, this is a better way of dealing with it by putting it, you know, when you say, don't take action, you put it on an agenda as an item so that you can say that. Kind of seems silly. I mean, in the meantime, if it came up, I mean, if we went back in time, I guess what we would have to have done, Burt would not have had time from when he found out to put it on the agenda. He would have still reported it. You probably would have directed him. At least I wouldn't object to the following situation. You would have directed him, don't take any action, and then we'll put it on the next agenda. And that's about the only difference that I can see that we would do. But you certainly don't want to tell somebody to keep working on something when you know you're going to be directing them not to, or probably are. But you do have to have it on the agenda so that, in that particular case, the, they were, there were other potential contractors that might be interested. They should have the notice so that they can be here to object. And that's where the problem came in, and that apparently was that potential contractor apparently objected, and that's how we got where we're at. But I'm not that concerned about it. I think the lesson was learned quickly. And it was a minor glitch. I don't consider it as something that we need to really worry about going forward beyond just keeping that in mind.
Okay. All right, thank you. So then, I just need a motion acknowledging the violation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item four. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of two of the three individuals to serve on the Battle Mountain Livestock Adventure Center Advisory Board, which currently has two openings. New terms are from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. And the possible candidates are, one, Katie Taylor; two, Mike Neff; three, Abigail Alstad. Anybody having questions, discussion, or motion? We have letters from all three candidates. Who sits on the, do you sit on the livestock board?
Yes.
As Commissioner?
Yeah, Mike's been on it too. He's just renewed.
Okay. So do you have a motion approved by you?
I'll make a motion that we accept one and two.
So Katie Taylor and Mike Neff?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. We'll move on to item five. For discussion of possible action to identify methods to enforce the ordinances in regards to garbage trucks spilling trash. Mr. Chop had asked that, this kind of was his agenda item. I don't know if we want to take a discussion, or should we just postpone it for the future?
I would postpone it until it's his item, and so.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just table this and move it until Mike can be here to speak on behalf of it. We'll move to item six. For discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the Tier Two contract between Landry County and David Neider. Hopefully, I said that correct. Neider?
What is it? Dave Neider?
Neider. Neider Law for Conflict Indigent Defense Services pursuant to the Landry County Plan for the provision of indigent defense services at a rate of $200 per hour in contract terms from January 25, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
Lakin Sullivan for the record. So he's going to take, he was originally going to take the first tier, but our second tier, Deborah Ammons, since she's local, she decided to take the first tier contract. So he is moving into the second tier.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Bill, contract looks under order.
Just a quick comment. Mr. Neider, you saw in the back of his background, I knew when he was at the Attorney General's office 20 years ago. Extremely well qualified for this. I'm a little surprised he's in this here. But, yeah, he'll, he'll be able to handle that kind of work here as well.
All right, if there's no question, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve David Neider.
Yes.
For conflict indigent defense services pursuant to the Landry County Plan and provision of indigent defense services at a rate of $200 per hour in a contract terms from January 25, 2024 through December 31, 2025.
No second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item seven. For discussion of possible action to set a special commission meeting to canvas the vote for the presidential preference primary on the possible date of February 14, 2024.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I just need to set a meeting so we can get the canvas done. Unfortunately, the week the state sets that we can get that canvas falls in between our two meetings.
So the 14th? Anybody have any questions on it? I'll hear a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the February 14, 2024 for the, to canvas the vote for the presidential primary.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have one question. What time would you guys like it at? It doesn't matter.
What time on the court, these guys?
Nine o'clock would be great.
Nine o'clock?
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving into... Oh, yes.
Can we get a public comment on item three?
Yeah, Lenny, I'll call for a public comment right at the end, so you'll be able to speak on it.
Because that says for non-agenda items.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So that, well, it can be brought up for, actually, Bill, is that okay? If you had a public comment for a particular item?
You have to reopen the item, I believe. Yeah, you should reopen the items. And allow public comment on the items.
Okay, so let, we're going to, which item, Lenny?
Part.
What item was it?
Three.
Three.
So we're going to open back up item three for discussion of possible action, which we've already decided we're going to open a backup for public comment, but it was on the violation of the open meeting law.
Okay, my name's Lenny Shepherd. And right here at the bottom of this page that everybody's looking at says, "Landry County is an equal opportunity provider." So I think everybody ought to look at that.
Thank you, Lenny. Okay, we'll move into item eight. Correspondence, correspondence reports future agenda items.
Commissioner, I would ask that we consider two dates, March 6 or March 13 for a potential town hall regarding Bank, Landry County Bank. Them are the dates that fit best for the experts who are supposed to come in and kind of present how that would be laid out and the benefits and pitfalls and open it up for questions and concerns and all that. So I'm not sure.
What did you say again?
Uh, March 6 and 13. Gives us enough time to really put it out there far and wide and get as much as we can.
With the 13th, it's just a reminder we have budget hearings on the 11th and the 12th, and we have a commissioner meeting on the 14th. So it'd be a pretty cool week if we elected to do the 13th. Just everybody keep that in mind. So the six works for me. I just want to make sure, whatever date we do select, that we have adequate time to notify the public and make sure that we're having this workshop. They're invited to ask questions, be involved, and so. What's everybody else saying?
I'm fine, as long as there's plenty of notice. Keep time to get the notice, okay?
We'll put a flyer together or something, maybe send a mailer out. That gives us a month to get that done. Not so long... And not so long that people lose their excitement over it.
Can you give me a brief overview on what you're doing with the bank?
We can certainly do that after the meeting or, uh, come back and add an agenda item, but.
Okay.
So, um, so March sixth and then what time would we want to do it on March sixth? Just would we start it at nine, ten?
About.
What do you guys want to do?
I don't know. Nine is fine.
Nine o'clock good for everybody?
If it's going to be a long, drawn-out thing, nine would probably be better.
I would think it's a pretty full workshop, so I'd imagine. Especially we have a lot of community, people show up and questions and, and that kind of, that sort of thing, so.
I just have a question about that date. Is that going to be where you're going to want us recording it in our office?
Um, I think we're doing more of a town hall. I don't know that we're necessarily bringing anything before the board to vote on. We're, we're, this is an informational thing, so I don't.
I was just checking because that day we were both upstairs with the state coming, so I just wanted to make sure what you needed.
So that'll be, that's how it would be advertised, as a town hall meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
We're hoping to have it at the civic center. Um, invite as many people as we can and flush this thing out.
So do we want to do it earlier than later in the day? See, this is the sixth, so that is on Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't know if maybe, uh, I don't know if evening would maybe give more people time to be off of work to show up there or, you know.
So do we want to maybe set it for five in the evening?
I would, yes, so people have a chance to get off work at ten.
How does that work for, because I'm not for sure how long these workshops last, you know? I mean, it's going to be from five to midnight, you know, is it, it just, I have no reality on that. This is called, now, for the record, they, the information I got from Charles, one of the bankers, it's coming. It's a six to eight-hour meeting, so we might be a little late if we started at five, but, uh, maybe start in the afternoon and give people a chance to come in at the end, too. I don't, I'm not sure. But it's a full workshop, full day. Maybe set it for like two o'clock in the afternoon? How does that work for everybody?
And it's fine that we're all there at the same time?
Yeah. Like you guys can't engage in discussion amongst each other, but to hear the workshop, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so March sixth at two o'clock? That's good with everybody?
That's the convention center.
At, yes.
Well, maybe not make that part of your motion because we got to verify that, that Rita doesn't have something scheduled there and make sure that we can.
Well, we're not making a motion, motion, right? Would it just be, is this?
Yeah, giving, kind of giving me direction here. This is kind of what we're speaking to, so we will bring this back. We will bring this back in front of you if we have this as a general consensus. And then we'll bring this back and make it an action item.
Okay.
Okay. Right, that's what we'll do then. Uh, so any more correspondence reports featured into items? We have the truck trash, so maybe we can just see if, uh, Mr. Chop will be here to speak of it and put it on.
You bet. We'll roll that one over.
Anything else you guys would like to see? No? Okay, so we'll move into public comment for non-agenda items, items only. Is there public comment? Okay, um, I'll hear a motion for a gentleman.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. That was a short meeting.